Hey, what you say then?
What you doing? It's hot in here.
It is hot in here.
Hammers City Council Public Hearing Agenda, April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, five-thirty P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
First order of ordinance, number one.
An ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on GovDeal.com. Janice Swallow.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The first three items is equipment that was turned over from the police department, surplus in poor condition. The rest of the items listed is evidence that was unclaimed. So we're asking for permission to surplus this and sell it on GovDeals.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Any questions from anyone on the council? Thank you, Jan. Orders number two.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a thirty-feet right-of-way agreement with Entergy for electrical service to the treatment plant expansion on Fagan Drive. Webb Anderson.
Right on time. Good evening.
This is what we discussed last meeting. It's to get the service to the new blowers. As I said, we've been working on it a long time. Lacy has, we have, and finally got the agreement from them.
Any questions from anyone here in the public? Any questions from anyone on the council? Thank you, Webb. Number three.
An introduction, I'm sorry, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget to transfer three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the sales tax fund two-zero-three balance to FY twenty-twenty-two Canal Improvement Project one-two-two-zero-six, Lacy Landrum.
Linked up on your agenda is the new consolidated budget. So what we're proposing to do is take the money from the sales tax fund balance, which is down here, a little over seven million, and taking the three hundred and fifteen thousand out of that, transferring it into the canal project. That leaves you with six million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred forty-eight in that budget, that fund balance. So this is to make that project go because, as described at the last meeting, there were some additional things put into that project when they realized how bad the canal and the under areas were. So this would be enough to make the whole project go with the additive alternate.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Any question from anyone on the council? Thank you, Lacy. That concludes our public hearing. Now we'll move right into our regular session agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
At this time, I'd like to call Pastor Ron Matthews up to lead us in our prayer.
Restless Father God, we thank you for your love, your kindness, and your tender mercy, how you have blessed us and kept us, brought us back once again in this city council meeting. We ask you to look upon us as our council administration conducts business affairs of this city. Lead us and guide us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, all veterans and active military, please render a proper salute for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda, I would like to get an approval of our minutes from our April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Move to approve our minutes.
Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Webb.
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is the presentation of the salary. Study presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jake Bore. I'm the director of operations for each and all. It's been a pleasure working with the administration of the city and all the employees here. And I can tell people it takes a great deal of pride in the work.
Sir, could I get you to talk directly into the mic so that it can get picked up? Thank you.
Bill here?
Is he coming here?
Yeah.
Is Bill coming? Do you want to move on to the public?
All right, let's go right into the public.
Number two?
Introduction.
Introduction number two?
Straight into introduction number two, please.
Introduction of an ordinance to grant and expanded conditional use, ECU, to allow for a mobile home located in at proposed mobile home area at one-seven-zero-eight-one Hoover Street. Per survey by Macklin Land Surveying, Inc., dated three-fourteen nineteen ninety-four, And the zoning commission recommended approval with conditions. One, this approval is with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon the change in occupancy or ownership of Mary Richardson. And two, the manufactured home must meet all requirements of placement and must be constructed to meet HUD standards. Jeffrey Lewenberger.
Yes, this is an expanded conditional use that was heard at the zoning commission on April seventh. And they recommended approval for the zero, like was just said. The applicant is willing to put a mobile home on the property at seventeen oh-eight-one Hoover Street. And it is within the proposed mobile home district. And the planning commission, or the zoning commission, did recommend approval for the zero at their April seventh meeting.
Anyone here on this matter? Any question from anyone on the council? Yeah, I have one. If it was already approved for that area already, why is coming before us? And say, was it already set up for mobile homes?
We have, we have an established map within the department that basically maps out where the proposed mobile home area should be in the city. And so we have various different areas. And actually, if you go to our G.I.S. website for all on our website, you can see where those proposed mobile home areas are. And that just basically gives more of a recommendation for them to place that mobile home there when it's already been established as a proposed mobile home area.
All right, and then what district this in?
District? District one, yes. Sorry.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
He doesn't own us over there?
Aye. Introduction number three.
Introduction of an ordinance to grant an expanded conditional use, ECU, to allow for a tattoo parlor allowed as a conditional use located at ten-forty Roma Avenue, Suite A, per deed by Roma Street Management, LLC, dated six-twenty-three-two-zero-one-seven, zoned C-dash-N, Z-two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-one-zero-two. The zoning commission recommended approval with the condition that such use is a personal right and expires upon change of occupancy and ownership. Jeffrey Lewenberger.
This was another expanded conditional use for a tattoo parlor that is at ten-forty Roma Avenue, which is in Suite A. That area is zoned CN. And in the CN zoning district, it isn't allowed by right for tattoo parlors, but it does include tattoo parlors as conditional uses, which requires it to go to the zoning commission and then to you guys for approval. And so that is what's happening. The planning commission met on April seventh and trying to get my numbers straight, and voted three-to-one to recommend approval to the city council as a tattoo parlor is allowed as a conditional use in the CN zoning district.
Is there anyone here from the public on this matter? Any question from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve.
Introduce.
I mean, introduce. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, May tenth, at five-thirty for both of those items.
Let's move into new business final adoptions. Number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on GovDeal.com. Janice Swallow.
Is Janice still here?
It's the same items that we just discussed in the public hearing. These are just being placed on GovDeals so that we can sell them just like we normally do in terms of surplusing items. Some of these are both evidentiary items and then other items that have been discarded by the city, used by departments but are no longer needed.
Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
All right. Final adoption number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a thirty-foot right-of-way agreement with Entergy for electrical service to the treatment plant expansion on Fagan Drive. Webb Anderson.
Any questions from anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Thank you, Webb. Final adoption of orders, number three.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two budget to transfer three hundred and fifteen thousand from the sales tax fund two-zero-three balance to FY twenty-twenty-two Canal Improvement Project one-two-two-zero-six, Lacy Landrum.
As explained in the public hearing, this is just the amount of money that we need in order to make the canal improvement projects go. There was an increase both in the scope of work and in the cost of doing business, as we know, over the last six to eight months. So we originally budgeted some funds for this. We need these additional funds in order to make the project go. You would be transferring from the sales tax balance. And after the transfer, you would still have over six point seven million dollars in that fund balance.
Anyone else from the public? Any other questions from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Sorry. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Move right along. Resolutions, none. New business. Resolution number one.
A resolution authorizing La Correta located at one-zero-eight Northwest Railroad Avenue to obtain a waiver of the open container law for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Tuesday, May fifth, twenty-twenty-two, from one P.M. to ten P.M. in the closed area of West Charles Street in front of the restaurant and in the south side of the Casa de Fresca parking lot, Mary Royale.
Any questions?
Is this a different area than it usually is? Usually, I think it's described as the streets.
Well, it's that area in front of the restaurant is West Charles Street. So it's closed off from the corner of the restaurant to the railroad tracks. And they set up the stage in the Casa de Fresca lot. So they close off that back half, that front half of it for the stage and setup for the band.
What exactly is the Casa de Fresca parking lot? That's what I'm confused about.
It's the parking lot that's located directly across from the La Correta restaurant. It runs parallel to the railroad tracks.
Okay, so in between the Chamber Building and La Correta, the parking lot? You're not going on the other side of Oak Street?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that was the Casa de Fresca building. So I'm confused whether that's the parking lot.
Yeah.
You're not going into that parking lot?
No.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Any other questions from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two.
Resolution number two. A resolution authorizing tacos and beer to sell and serve alcohol for Cinco de Mayo celebration on Thursday, May fifth, twenty-twenty-two, from three P.M. to ten P.M. in the Morrison Alley Park behind the restaurant and between Cypress and Cherry Street. Jose Vales- Valencia? Valencia?
Valencia here, but he did turn in these waiver requests. And then this one got transferred over to the city council. This is the same request that he made last year and the same request that we did for La Correta last year as well. So these are both on the Cinco de Mayo day only. This one is for a little bit shorter timeframe from three P.M. to ten P.M. It is in just that Morrison Alley Parkway in between Cypress and Cherry Street. So it's the back parking lot area. He is going to be selling and serving off of his back porch, but he may also have his food truck assembly out there as well. So that's what we're authorizing is for that alley parkway area to have both the truck and to possibly be selling a little bit into that alleyway.
Anyone from the public? Any question from anyone on the council? If I had any questions, I couldn't ask him because he's not here. And so I don't think nobody can answer no questions for him.
I would just say that this is exactly the same thing as what was approved as last year. So if there's any questions, we can regard that scope. It's the same thing as what was done last year.
Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Stay. Resolution number three.
A resolution authorizing tacos and beer to obtain a waiver of the open container law for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Thursday, May fifth, twenty-twenty-two, from three P.M. to ten P.M. in the Morrison Alley Park behind the restaurant and between Cypress and Cherry Street.
Very similar to what you just did in the last ordinance. The last ordinance focused on the selling and service of alcohol. This one focuses on what you granted to La Correta same day, just a waiver of open container in that back parking lot area.
Anyone else from the public? Could you step up to the mic, please, and give your name and address?
Okay, my name, my name Jack Don't Tell, eight oh nine South Chestnut. He want to have all this and waiver all this stuff? He should be here talking and speaking up for himself to think that he want to have going on in the city of Hammond.
Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Stay.
Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a software support agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., for hardware and software services in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I come before you this evening asking for permission for the mayor to enter into contract agreement with Tyler Technologies for Executime, which will be our new timekeeping system for the city of Hammond. Currently, we're using an application called Kronos, which right now we've got it where it's just holding on long enough just for us to switch to something new. We're going with Tyler because it ties everything into that one umbrella to make it easy so we don't have any additional applications trying to make them work with others. It's all under the same umbrella, so to make things a lot easier and a lot more consistent.
Anyone else from the public have any questions?
How long is the contract? You might have said that, I missed it. Is this a year?
It's, we're paying annually, so I guess, yeah.
Okay.
It's a year.
You came up last year, I think, the same one, isn't it? Is it the same one or something?
We looked at, we looked at an upgrade for Kronos for last year. And in that upgrade for Kronos, we ran into issues with the Kronos application. So in that time, we did research, we drew back, did research on some other things, and we're actually moving forward with Executime because it falls with all of the other stuff that we're using from Tyler Technology already.
So you never really, y'all didn't go forward the last time? But y'all did come to us, I think, with?
Came to and proposed, we came to you all and proposed it, but we didn't?
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, similar.
Is this within what you had budgeted for this item or the range?
For permission for him to sign the agreement and for us to move forward and go ahead and pay. We're not asking for any money.
I like that. No, I'm just kidding.
All right, pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to ratify and award bids for Jackson Park Basketball Court Project four-two-zero-dash-one-two-two-zero-eight. Webb Anderson.
As I think you all know, we took bids on this last week and received five bids. The low bidder was J.A.C. Construction of South Louisiana. They're out of Franklinton, Louisiana, in the amount of three hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars. And as you can see, hopefully in your hyperlink budget, the shortfall is two hundred forty-six thousand dollars for the entire total project budget. We should have also a letter that was sent. We knew prices were going to come in a lot higher than what was originally budgeted. And the basketball court by itself was, I think, forty percent over than what we originally planned a year ago. And there was also a limestone parking lot that was to be included in the project.
Is this just a, this is a covered basketball court? Not just, not just the goal, just the court?
Like Mooney.
Okay.
Surfacing and everything.
So we only have one of those in the city, right? A covered basket, or a Mooney, or MLK is covered, okay?
One of Margaret King.
Okay.
So you have the option of if you want to go forward with the project, you can do how we just did and just finalize with the canal project.
you can do how we just did and just finalize with the canal project. There are funds in the sales tax fund balance that you can transfer. So you, if you wish to move forward with the project, then you could approve this, but it would be contingent on that budget amendment. So we would do it just like what we did with the canal improvements where it's going to start at this meeting. It would be an introduction of an ordinance to move the money. You would accept this just based on contingent on the budget amendment for the resolution, and then later towards the end of the meeting, we would do an introduction of a budget amendment to move the money.
Yeah, so it'd make, I would make a motion to approve, uh, the resolution contingent upon, uh, transfer of funds.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Wait, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going.
I'm just trying to talk through.
I was just going.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, it's, and it's a similar, it's the same kind of process that we just use for canal improvements, so that everybody's on the same page, so you understand what your options are.
Sam got to get it out while he got a chance.
I'm just curious as to why, and I guess this is more of a question for Councilman Divatario, why it needs to be covered, uh, you know, just looking at?
That's, that's what the?
Hold on, hold on.
You asked me a question, I was answering.
I wasn't finished with my question. I have three parks and none of them are covered, and, and I think there's a couple of other parks that don't have them covered. I'm just curious if we have a reason it needs to be covered. Is that what the public has asked you for out there?
Uh, yes, I don't think Kate Square has a basketball court.
That's right.
In that park, so I don't, yeah.
Two of my three parks don't have.
Just want to make sure. But yeah, the, the people in that district, uh, and in that, that neighborhood wanted a cover on there, and, um, that's, that's what I want to do.
Okay. Well, last time there was a structure built in one of my parks, I wasn't, I had nothing to do with it. I got a bunch of flack for there being a structure that inhibited people's views, so I'm just making sure it's something that people have given their input, that they want it covered, um, and it's been fully thought out, because obviously, it's quite an expensive thing to cover a basketball goal, and my two parks show it doesn't need to be covered.
And, and the person that had a problem with that, uh, bathroom in your park, that old Miss Louise Bosch.
Well, she's not the only one.
Yeah. It was several, it was several who opposed that, that project. That's, that's why that didn't, didn't move forward. And then the one in Kate Park?
No, it didn't move forward, it's sitting in Clark Park right now.
I'm talking about the basketball goal in Kate, I mean, uh, bathrooms in Kate Square.
I'm talking about Clark Park.
Okay. Well, you have so many parks, I only have one, so it's hard to keep up.
I, I get it, I get it. It's really hard to keep up sometimes.
Charles?
So I, I just have a question. This is not a grant project, but?
Is that mic on, Charles?
Can you hear me now?
It's showing that it is, but it doesn't.
It does sound like, yeah, go ahead, Charles.
This isn't a grant project per se, but we have been assisting in this project, beginning with the improvements to the basketball, the playground, um, the, the rubber, rubber surfacing and the shade structure. Um, from what I understood, we were initially talking about covering the existing basketball court. I think this showed, uh, an expanded or larger basketball court constructed where the existing one is, as well as the parking lot, which was not initially thought of. Um, so I guess my question is, have we looked at just covering the existing parking lot, uh, but the existing basketball court and what that cost would be compared to building one that's twice the size with a cover? Would we be able to cover the existing parking lot now, or possibly even expand the existing parking lot without demolition? I, I think there's also a live oak that's in the way of the parking lot.
I don't think they're demoing anything, they're just adding to the parking lot. There's no demo over there, they're just adding a?
Going where the existing basketball court is, but that, that one's too flat for the new coating to be, and, and you'd have to have footings for your structure.
So?
So just going where the existing one is.
Why is that? Well, when I, when I went over it with Chuck and everything, we're putting a basketball cover over the goal, resurfacing, and the parking lot is going next to it, there's no parking lot right there, so there's nothing to pull up right there, it's, it's just in between.
Just the basketball, the existing?
Existing concrete, we were putting a cover.
You can't put the coating on it, and, and you have to put footings for the new structure, the new cover for the basketball court.
That was always in the plan.
Yeah.
My question is, with all the land we have out there, why don't we just leave that? Because in Devon's, uh, park, we're battling with, what do we do with bleachers and having a good dry surface for bleachers and our picnics tables or whatever? Why don't we just move that court? The reason why they can't use the court we have now is because the coating that they want to be warranted has to be, it has to have an oval surface on it. So the surface that's out there now is flat, so there's a lot of space. I would say leave that where it is, use the existing concrete for other things and build your new court in another area, which could be close behind the tree. I'm not quite sure why you're taking down that big, large oak.
So now, Charles, you were coming in now, now you're talking about adding more concrete to the park.
No, ac- actually, what I was suggesting is that we could potentially cover the existing basketball court. Now, if there's?
He was suggesting the same thing we were going to originally do was put footings and the beams up to cover the existing park, court, but if you want a bigger court like you have in Mooney, well, then that's a bigger court.
Well, I think, I think originally when we, when we talked, I thought the court was designed to have a cover at some point when they put the footings in, the, the, the court that we have now, we were going to put a cover on it. So the only difference here is, is that the surfacing, it needs to have an oval, it, it needs to have a little slope on, on the, uh, on the pavement, and it doesn't have that.
In order to be warranted, or if you just don't get it warranted, you could put a surface on what you have there and expand it.
The, uh, the parking lot is a, I, I guess it's part of this proposal, but it would be a separate consideration. There is a very large live oak in that space. So that, that would certainly be something that, um, if other departments haven't weighed in, I think we would want to get their opinions about whether that's feasible. Is, is the tree in bad condition? Is it diseased? Is it dying? Does it need to be removed?
I mean, I, I'm, this is the first I've ever hearing about the tree. When we talked, we already talked, I sat down with Chuck and everybody, and the cover was going up, the servicing was going there, and then the, and then the, uh, parking lot. So there was no discussion of a tree there being taken down. There was no discussion on the servicing not being warranted, uh, on, on the, uh, way the basketball court was, uh, set up originally. So all, all was discussed is that we're sure because the increase of pricing, which that's, everyone has increasing prices, especially since this was a year and a half ago planned, a, a lot has gone up every year. So, you know, it doesn't matter. I mean, if, if we had money, play with it, but thirty percent increase every year, see, I mean, everything's going to be over budgeted.
What, what I might suggest, if I can respectfully suggest this, is maybe consider tabling this and, and allowing those other departments that haven't had a chance to review the project to look at it and, and, and to see if, again, if is the tree diseased, is it dying, does it need to be removed? Is it healthy? Should it stay? Does that change where a parking lot might go? Could we expand or use the existing park, uh, existing basketball court? Um, and then we can bring those answers back to you, and then if you want to proceed with this proposal, you could appropriate those funds at that time.
Ask this still question here. If you had all that in mind to table this, did you reach out to Councilman Sam before tonight?
I, I did not. I just learned about this project. This, this hasn't been a grant project. We were helping out several months back when, um, some of our recreation staff were out of the office. Um, but I, I, I wasn't even aware this was being bid until last week when it was being bid.
Well, Lash, I mean, let's, I've sent several emails to the D O R department originally trying to get everything going with the, the, uh, rubber servicing, talking about the discussion. We actually were in your office several months ago, talking about the slab and getting it covered. So I mean, it may not have, you may not have known it was going to have to bid, but it, this is definitely a project that has been on the radar for, for a long time. I know you haven't been doing any grants for it, but it's, we all sat in your office, discussed it.
Right.
I, I met with Chuck, with everybody, and said this is the first time something to do with a tree has come up about the issue in a parking lot. All it was increasing up prices, and we were going to use the same basketball court, put a cover on it, resurface it, and put a parking lot so they can park over there, and then run lines, can do it in lines underneath so where they can run some lights in the future and run some cameras. So that's all we discussed. Everything was, no, nothing has came up since then, and now tonight, discussion of, of a tree and?
I say, I can only speak to what I knew, and I was not aware of this project.
No, that's, that's fine.
So, um?
You just came up and talked, so that's why.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just bringing you what I've since learned, and I've had a few conversations with some other department heads. I'm not going to single anyone out, but, um, it seems like there might have been some, some miscommunication. So I'm, I'm just saying that I would respectfully request, if we're going to consider this, adding the two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars to the budget, so we can move forward with this project, maybe table it for a week or until the next council meeting, so that other departments can weigh in and make those determinations, so you can make the best informed decision you can.
Let me ask the question again. Since you met with those department heads, have you tried to reach out to Councilman Sam?
I, I have not. This is, this was not one of my projects. So, like I said, I only became aware of this being out to bid like last week, and it was too late at that point. It was already out to bid, it was already being bid, it was always coming, already comes to the council. So I, I've only learned some of this stuff by myself going out there and taking a look at things. Um, I was actually hoping that the tree was, had come down during Ida, but we were out there yesterday, and I learned that the tree is still there, so.
Well, thank you, um, Charles, but Webb, it's, y'all have been dealing with the project right now, so what, what we have on the price right now is covering the basketball goal resurfacing in the parking lot.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's not what you have. What you have is, are you, are you adding to it, or are you going to tear it up and then redo one so you can have it? Yeah, they talking about tearing up what's there.
The same thing I explained.
And redoing it like Mooney's park. Or, depending on what Devon said, if you're concerned about green space, you know, maybe we check, but why tear it up? It's, it's, it's a good space that you could use for other things and just add the court you're talking about over to the left, to the northeast.
Forty-five days that the, uh, for the contractor hold their price, so if, if you do?
Oh, why, well, I don't know why this didn't come up before tonight. I'm just, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just confused because this was never, ever, last week, it was, it was good. I'm not trying to, you know, but I, I, I met with Chuck and, and talked, and, and I'm several weeks back before that, Lacy was in one of the meetings, so we went through everything.
Bids on what?
Exactly.
Chuck have discussed.
Exactly. So, um, if, would, um, yeah, I mean, to me, this should have been told to me, uh, last week. So, I mean?
So your other option is you could just go forward, um, and then just continue dialogue with the contractor to see if there's maybe a small change order or something like that, if you could shift the parking lot or maybe change the covering, anything like that. You still have options, I guess is what I'm saying. You could go forward with this tonight, you would make progress on the project, accept the bid contingent on the budget amendment, and then if there's any final tweaking of the plan.
Well, yeah, that, that, and then we can make an amendment next meeting, and then I'm gonna get with Chuck, I'm gonna get with you and Chuck and figure out the situation, the, the best way to finalize it or amend it or change it, so we can kind of move on.
You obviously have enough money to do the parking, if they were to agree to take the money you have now and get the parking lot done, correct? Do you have enough money to do the parking? If you didn't do the, the, the basketball pad right now?
If you didn't?
And you went right now, directly into the?
Discuss it, because if you decrease the scope by a certain amount, you?
Well, you wouldn't be. I'm talking about if you, well, I see what you're saying. But what I'm saying is if you let him go ahead and start the parking lot, because that was a big issue.
Award the?
The entire project?
Contractor. Now there can be small change orders for some certain things. If we move, if we move it, we've got prices, we've got unit prices.
Yeah.
That can be done, and we can get into discussion.
And everything's continuing to go up right now, so I, I would rather try to get this in gear, and then we can modify it between now and next council meeting.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting, now you're awarding contingent, you still have plenty of time to?
Yes.
Even if you decide not to do it.
And we have to have one next week.
Yeah.
So it's be soon.
Okay. That'll work. So I'm ax, I'm axing one question, because, uh, see how confusing this just got? Uh, now I hear, and this is my first time hearing of, you talking about tearing down the basketball court they have right there, right now?
The concrete.
The concrete. But this is the issue that I have. I'm pissed off, and the reason I say that, in one more month, school going to be out. We talking about a park for the kids, and that's the issue that I be having. When it come to the kids, and I'm gonna go and say it, in the, I'm gonna say, the black and brown community, that we always have a issue, but when it come to the kids in the other park, we rush, rush like hell trying to get those projects together. And now it don't make sense. Here it is, one more month, school going to be out. If you tear that basketball court down right now, what are those kids going to do? And that's what we up against. That's why we have so many issues. Not in you all neighborhood, that's why we have so much issues in the black neighborhood, because you're taking everything away from the kids, and if you keep taking away from the kids, the city going, going to have a real problem. And so we can't keep doing that. What the mayor said, it do make sense. You come out better by leaving that court there, creating another court, because same thing in Mooney Park. You cannot tear the basketball goal down and try to do another basketball court. But this something that, uh, Councilman Sam hadn't reached out, talked in y'all office, and yet we get up here, and it's like all this is stuff brand new to him. So that's what I was telling you the last time we was here. The stuff is confusing.
Well, my suggestion is, the original suggestion, you leave it as it is, you have the court for the summer for the kids while they building the other one. Build an, an additional, build the court you want, because it's a bigger court. It's got the warranty, it's got the coating, it's got the cover, and parking lot, just add the dollars to it, and then we can reuse, once that's done, that concrete for another use.
Well, I, I think, uh, yeah, I agree in a way, and I, and I think we, uh, I, I would like to move forward like this, and in between now and the next meeting, I want to get a meeting set up with, with Webb, with you and Chuck possibly, and, uh, go over some game, and then the recreation park, and try to go over some, some options, and get with the mayor, and figure out what we can do as far as making some amendments to make it work. We may have some other options that we can come up with to use that, that court right now instead of tearing it up, moving another one, going with a different resurfacing, um, material or something. Um, just see. I mean, it may take a little while to look at, but, uh, I think that'd be the best way, so we can kind of get it in gear, move forward, since it's been on the books for a while now, and, um, before the next meeting, just have a, have a meeting with everybody and come up with a game plan. And the grant writer? And the grant writer since, since, uh? Since he suggests it be tabled. Yeah, so, um, so, yeah. I, I make a motion to approve, um, contingent upon transferring funds.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Webb. All right, I'm gonna put a pin right in number six, and I'm gonna come right back to, uh, the presentation that you read, the presentation of the, uh, salary study.
All right, again, thank you for having me here this evening. Um, it was great working with administration, meeting with employees, um, learning more about what they do. Um, for the scope of this project, we examined a hundred and seven jobs for the city and determined their relative worth based on industry standards and geographical standards. We used the Baton Rouge metropolitan area and then adjusted for, um, a municipal government. Uh, we also, uh, compared it against sixteen other markets, um, that we gave to administration to, uh, just for their information if they're?
Excuse me, where are those markets? Do they list in their report, the other sixteen?
No, they're not in that report. That report has the Baton Rouge, uh, general area with, adjusted for the size of the municipality and the industry which would be government.
So we don't have the list of the sixteen?
It, it would have been, yeah, I can get that to you for sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, people texting, I can't hear you.
Oh, sure. That would have been a, a really long, a really long report. Um, so we compared it to Baton Rouge metro areas are primary. Um, the system we use, which is Comp Analyst, we can adjust the data based on the size of the organization, um, the zip code, so we can get very, very specific, um, a use of having those other market data. Uh, for example, if we wanted to take a look at, um, Jackson, Mississippi, uh, you would know, to take a look at Jackson, Mississippi, you would know, maybe that might be a good place to advertise some jobs, right, if the pay that you have here is gonna be higher than the pay there, that's good information to have. Like I said, we examined a hundred and seven jobs for the city, we conducted conversations with department heads and employees to confirm the accuracies of job descriptions, as well as obtain information regarding incentives for various programs, we also did our own market research to determine if there were any incentives, such as certifications or other competencies like that, that we could add in to give department heads some discretion over starting salaries, job titles vary pretty widely between organizations, so we really focused on job duties, tasks, responsibilities, in order to get the best pricing data, and the result of pricing is to really inform decision-making, to show where you are relatively to the local market, that you can make informed decisions on how you're paying your people. We use CompAnalyst, which is the market's leading compensation management system, it allows us to review current market data, the data that we use for this survey was current as of December 2021, it comes from eight hundred million different data points, that's pulled directly from HRIS systems, so your payroll that you use here likely feeds into all of that data, CompAnalyst purchases that up-to-date data and uses it for the database, it's a very specific system, we can be very, very detailed in the data that we get, so we try to get all of these inputs for the jobs, and if it's not on the job description, we'll ask for them, to make sure that we have the best picture that we can for the, for the position, for example, just some of the data sources that we can plug in that'll affect the data, education levels, we can change a level, level of education into, in the database and see how it affects the data, we can choose different years of experience, working conditions, if there's a hazard present, any type of competency, skill sets, certifications, license, licenses, number of direct reports also affects data, who the person reports to, you know, if it reports to a manager versus a director, that will skew the data slightly, FLSA status, if someone's exempt or not exempt, working hazards, we can also get very specific on managerial responsibilities, for example, if someone has full or partial responsibility for staffing decisions, budgetary decisions, training employees, performance evaluations, supervision levels, policy management, process creation, we can edit all those things, and that slightly affects the data to give us a really good picture of where people should On the report, you'll notice that there will be numbers that are reflecting the twenty-fifth, fiftieth, and seventy-fifth, as well as the average compensation for each position, that shows how the data is distributed, for example, if a salary is on the seventy-fifth percentile, that means it's higher than seventy-five percent of the salaries for that job, and lower than twenty-five percent, you'll also notice a comp ratio, and that's a metric that we use to determine the appropriate salaries for positions within an organization, because it gives you an, of an idea of where it is relative to a midpoint, normally, it's done on the fiftieth percentile, because we based our salary ranges suggestions on the twenty-fifth, we thought it would be easier to understand if we based it on the twenty-fifth percentile, just so you can see how far people are from that midpoint that we chose. For example, this is a planning coordinator position, the benchmark that we provided showed the twenty-fifth percentile at forty-one thousand, fiftieth percentile at forty-seven seven, and the seventy-fifth at fifty-six seven, if you look below that, that is the incentives that we suggested, we plugged in different levels of experience, education, certifications, and measured how it affected the data, and then we included that as a percentage change, we put it as percentages because it would be relevant no matter what the council does end up setting the salaries as, but it may be more marketable and understandable for employees if it is a set dollar rate, once the council does set those salary ranges, if that makes sense. Just an example of how that would work, managers currently don't have much discretion over incoming employees' pay, so that's the reason we included these different levels of experience, for example, the building and planning department hires a planning coordinator, because the candidate has four years of experience, the starting salary will be increased by two point one percent, during the course of employment, the employee completes their bachelor's degree, which results in salary increase of four point one percent, and gets a certification for the American Association of Code Enforcement, so all these percentage points tie directly back to data, so each one of these we plugged in, we saw how much it changed the salary, and we measured that to give those percentage differences. For the salary ranges, we decided that using the twenty-fifth percentile of the compensation benchmarks would provide the most realistic and achievable outcomes in terms of budgetary implementation, so to establish those bands, we applied a twenty percent variance using the twenty-fifth percentile as a midpoint, for example, the current starting salary for a general park worker is twenty-two thousand, we ran the numbers, and the twenty-fifth percentile that we used as the midpoint was thirty-one thousand five hundred, so we used a ten percent variance on either side of that, which suggested the bottom of the range being twenty-eight three fifty, and the top thirty-four six fifty, which was a percentage difference of twenty-nine percent higher than the current starting salary.
Charles, where's your percent, this question, your percent difference, does that come from the difference of starting and top of range, or one of these other markers?
Starting and bottom.
Starting and current, or starting and suggested?
Starting and current, and the bottom, the suggested bottom.
Suggested bottom, so the third, the third number?
Right.
Okay.
General, I'm asking you a question, general park worker, what's their job consist of?
I'll have to take a look at the actual job description, I believe it is maintenance of park, we did take a look at quite a few, so I wouldn't, I don't know quite off the top of my head.
Those are our folks that cut the grass and pick up the trash.
No, I'm asking him, he giving the presentation, so when I ask questions, I'm looking for all of them to come from him, cause I'm saying, we paid him to do this here, so I want the questions, I want my answers to come from you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, when I have a chance to take a look at the, the actual data as well. For employee benefits, we compared those to some other similarly sized localities in the area, for annual and sick leave, those are pretty, pretty standard based on other municipalities, Hammond does have more paid holidays than those other municipalities, health insurance costs are a little bit higher, especially for families, the deductible is significantly higher, retirement contributions are on point, but to note, younger employees are not as enthusiastic about benefits as older employees used to be, a survey, survey of millennials showed that just about fifty percent of them sign up for a retirement plan when offered it, compared to seventy-five percent of the general population, so something to keep in mind, younger employees do value work-life balance more, so increasing PTO, collect time, adding in maybe holidays, would be a good idea, if that became an option. A good idea to really highlight the city's benefits would be issuing a total rewards statement, once a year, to employees that show what the dollar value of those annual leave days, sick leave, paid holidays, retirement contributions, health insurance premiums, add up to, that's a really good way to show the value of the benefits that you offer employees. Currently, there's no link between performance and compensation, we are suggesting that in order to better incentivize strong performance, that the city may want to link performance directly to compensation increases, for example, a five rating could correspond to a four percent increase, five being the highest rating, and go down from there, that would make it a little bit more, give people a little bit more incentive to have high performance, you would obviously need to train managers on the rating process, rating errors, there would have to be a distribution that would, you would need to train managers on, so that, you know, not everyone would get, a four, for example, that would follow a bell curve, four is for all of them.
Question on that, would that be as an alternative to the, we, we hear we give a two percent raise every year, where are you, would that be a change to that, so that your, your raise percentage is based on the performance?
Exactly.
If we implemented that?
Yeah, if you implement that.
I would, I would just note, to be careful there, so that we don't get across state law, for, for fire, in years three through twenty-three, you're required to do a two percent longevity raise, so.
All those things have to be factored in, but it would be, my question was to make sure that it was as opposed to two percent, you're not saying two percent, and then also this as well, right?
Exactly, exactly, so a satisfactory would be two percent, but you would be able to have the ability to reward high performers, and that type of thing. One caution for these increases, there is often a desire to give kind of a blanket raise for these types of studies, you do wanna avoid weight compression when you do have, say, a lower level of salaries that meet kind of a midpoint salary, it can result from only increasing those lower minimum salaries and arbitrary pay decisions, so to keep that from happening, just consistently keeping track of the market rate, conducting pay equity reviews as necessary, and then also considering other not financial compensation like perks, holidays, annual leave, things like that. For the maintenance, this really should be reviewed every year to make sure that total rewards are at the least market standard, again, total rewards statement would be a really good idea to implement, just to show employees what you're providing them in terms of non-direct pay benefits, there should also be some procedures created to monitor merit, cost of living, and performance raises, to make sure that those adhere to the plan, a process should be created for, if an employee takes on more responsibility in their job description, so that that can be taken to account. And any questions, another document, the, the report has most of the data.
Yeah, are you gonna go into the report, or is this the presentation?
This is the presentation.
Okay, well, I have questions, which is, your report terrified me, there's a lot of people who are very, very underpaid according to your report, you guys don't have like a number, right, what this would equal to, do you?
We have been working with administration to price that out.
How are we going on that? I think our number, if we implement exactly according to the report, is somewhere around five million dollars, we are gonna have full implementation of each person, each amount, and some options for the council to consider, we had hoped to have that finished by today, we are not finished number crunching since we just got the final report, so we're double checking everything, our hope is to wrap this into the budget process and have raises go into effect July one with the adoption of the budget, so this is the first step of the discussion, the second thing that we have been researching, and we have documents to show and everything, and links to show up to that, but we've locked, looked at a lot of different pay plans in addition to what they've looked at as well, and so we have just a document that goes through all of those, and we have in the incentive pays, as, as Mr. Dufour described, it's, it's easy to see it in the report in terms of a percentage, but it may be more tangible for us to budget, and more tangible for employees to understand if there's a flat dollar rate associated with incentives, like I know I'm gonna get an extra five hundred dollars if I go finish a degree, or something like that, rather than just a percentage, and it also probably incentivizes that employee to get it earlier rather than later, because the percentage, you know, of course, would be more valuable towards the end, but that flat percentage says, hey, that flat rate says, hey, I'm gonna go get that early on and have that really impact my, which is what we want, we want a more well-trained workforce going forward, so those are some things that we are trying to finalize to get to you all, again, this is the first part of this discussion, and so he's here to answer questions about his data, about his process, about his report that he produced.
I had a couple of questions, I mean, like the comparables, I didn't see they were on here, but then I saw they were on insurance, they had comparables, like you mentioned, on the health insurance, Mandeville, Slidell, and Baton Rouge, so I'd imagine Mandeville, Slidell, and Baton Rouge are three of the sixteens that you used, or?
Those were, we use sixteen different market-focused data likes, so for example, I'll just-
You made a comment about Jackson, was Jackson in the comparable, Mississippi?
No, we use that for the actual, like, the salary data, so for-
They're like a hundred and sixty thousand, I guess, probably a pretty big city, huh?
Yeah, so we, we did Baton Rouge metro, both all industries, and then government-specific, as well as the same for Jackson, Lafayette, Louisiana as a whole, Mississippi as a whole, Mobile, Alabama, Monroe, and the New Orleans metro area.
So is this the only presentation that you sent to the city, or have you, I hope you did anymore, this, this was the only copy that you sent to the city?
Yes.
Okay, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think I asked for, when we send this out, could a city councilman get a copy of it also, because, and I don't know if they ever told you, the biggest issue that the employees have with the, the city administration, that they don't trust them, and so that's one reason I had picked you, you know, well, that's one reason I voted for you, was any changes made to this?
We based it solely off job descriptions, you know, there were conversations with employees and department heads to clarify job duties, to see, for example, if, you know, a particular job had different weights in different areas, for example, if, say, a position that was involved with, I believe it was heavy equipment, how much of that was a maintenance percentage, right, so we were able to weight that job appropriately-
Okay.
-based on the, those, those duties and qualifications.
How many, how many employees do the city have, working for, how many employees the city have?
I wanna say it's around three hundred.
I really don't know, and how many did you all talk to?
We were here for two days, I spoke to all the department heads, and I was here to speak to any employees that wanted to speak to me, and I was also available via phone and email.
Yeah, okay, once again, how many employees, all together, how many of them did you talk to?
I don't have that number on here.
Yeah, and see, this is why I'm asking this here, from what I gather, from what the employees have said, it's like there's nothing, it's like they still, it's like they overbudget, I'm saying what they're getting paid, so, and I don't really know, I haven't even went through all this, I'm gonna be honest with you, so, sir?
I'm sorry, not to-
Oh, no, you're good, you're good.
The vast majority of, of positions are, we are recommending increases for almost all of them.
Yeah, and I, and I'm gonna say it again, I think I asked, if I'm not mistaken, that please, when you send this out, send it to all the city councilmen, so we could be on the same page, we looking at the same thing, I'm quite sure I asked that, but I'm gonna go back and look for myself, and if the administration get it, we right back at square one, and that, and I think I told you this here, when you was up here, that the employees don't trust the administration, that's why they didn't let HR do it.
If, you know, when I sent it to administration, if you're worried about like any type of altering of the report, it was sent in a PDF, so that would prevent, some of that, I'd be happy to verify that one of them, you know, which report is the one that I sent to.
How many revisions, were there a few revisions ma- made to?
Sure. Yeah, we met with employees and made sure that, you know, there were, we needed to take another look at a position, that things fell in line, so yes, there were revisions made.
So we right back at square one, and I'm gonna say this here, I- I want to get a copy of everything you sent to the city. I'm going to speak for me. Because from what I'm looking at and what I see, and from what I heard, and it's just a day, that it ain't benefiting the guys that I see every day working. And it's funny, though, the ones, when the administration brought the ones that they want in place, their salary exceed everything you got in this book. They wade up there. And I'm saying that those are the ones making the money that we handpick, and the ones that I see every day out there working, this don't do them no justice. And, and when I sit here and look at things, when I do things, I want, and I say this all the time, I want it to be equal for everybody, just be fair for everybody. I'm not looking at this here man making $100,000. And I see him every two weeks or every three weeks, and then this here man who I see every day, he making $10 an hour. That's what, that's, that's why I was fighting. I'm, I'm fighting for everybody, see? Because I know this here, this shouldn't just be about the fire department, the police department. This should be about every department, and that's what I was looking for. I was looking for, if a man gonna eat, he need to be able to eat. He shouldn't have to eat crumbs. He should be able to eat a whole loaf of bread if he want. But I don't see it in the report. And I don't, and from the workers that I talked to, they not happy. And I was expecting, I heard Ms. Lacy say, that it's a couple of ways that we going to do it. And I know you don't have nothing to do with it. There's a couple of ways we going to do it, but guess what? Still and all, and I'm just going to say it, I have to say, seem like my race come up short all the time with these couple of ways we going to do it. And I know you have nothing to do with this, but these guys were looking for their raise come December, not July. Everything that went up in the world, and we still expecting these same workers to come out here and work for pennies. We can't do it. And, and now we talking about July, give them their money? No. They need their money before you even came. They needed their money in December. That's what I was looking for.
If the council is committed to having a special meeting on May 3rd, I guess, is the next one that you're looking at, we'll have the spreadsheets and the numbers to you. You'll be able to see everybody's individual raises. I think you'll see that many of them are double digits, and you'll be able to see all that individually. If you have any questions, if you have any suggestions, if you have any ways that you want to change that and implement that, we can start that process. We can do an introduction of a budget ordinance at the next meeting. We can pass them in, in May.
Then we definitely need to discuss the, the study. Also, the last company that was hired by the charter committee, you know, I like how they had, they gave it to us at one of our meetings, went over the city of Hammond, city of Alexander, city of Slidell, city of Russon, city of Thibodeaux, city of Gonzales, city of Zachary, when they did their comparables. So it had a breakdown of everything when they did their study about what they were comparing it to, similar-like cities. So I hear Baton Rouge a lot on here, I hear a lot of big cities.
Sure.
You know, Baton Rouge, 200,000 plus people, I mean, that's not Hammond. So what I'm saying is.
That is true.
That should have been on this, what I got. And I shouldn't have gotten this Thursday or whenever, Friday when we got it, and have it on a meeting today, which is fine, but, you know, it is what it is. But, you know, I don't know why the breakdown wasn't a little better, so it's a little more clear.
Sure.
To understand and review everything, and, you know.
The reason that we included those markets, because we have actual stats to pull from.
Right.
So there are a lot of positions that, yes, you could compare it to, you know, Pottetula or another city like that, right? But you're competing against the greater market for these positions. So that's really what you need to keep in mind for this, is that we're not, you know, people aren't going to another similarly sized city to, to get a job. They're going to be looking towards, you know, larger metro areas. And, and that's the, that's the data we have to pull from.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that concept, but I mean, you also, you know, kind of comparable, why is it all the, all the comparables along with Baton Rouge as far as revenues, as far as population taxes? You know, just like somebody isn't going to pay the price of a New York house in Hammond, Louisiana. It's, it's not comparable. You couldn't, you couldn't pull a condo in New York and put them against a condo in Hammond. So, so what I'm saying, so there is a little bit of both. Now, I'm not saying pull all around from the area.
Sure.
You got to pull out, you know, see what you're competing against. But I guess that's, and you may have, I mean, but I have no idea, because I don't have any of the comparables.
Sure. We, you know, we wanted to make sure that the data that we gave you was not subjective, that it was based solely on statistical relevance that we can pull from and point to. So, you know, that's if we had pulled from similarly sized cities, cities, that would have given you information on what the cities were paying. But honestly, you need to be aware of, you know, what other, what other competition exists for, that's going to be pulling talent, right? Because there's a lot of, you know, jobs that people could just leave to go to the private sector, for example.
Yes, it look like we're going to sit here back at square one. From what I'm gathering, and it's coming from the employees, not me, that this is a big joke. For getting paid, underpaid. So all this we talked about, and God knows, I was hoping this here will come to an end because, like me, I want everybody to have their money. And I want them to have it today, not tomorrow, not next week. But I, I don't know what to say, you know? How much did we spend on this here again?
About 60,000, I think, was it? 62, something?
Oh, he know, he the one got paid. How much we spent on this, sir?
The firm that I worked for contracted for, I believe it was 62.
62.
And we have about five people working on this project.
Are you, are we adding this to our meeting on Tuesday? Okay. Is that, is that what the council?
Except for the council, but that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Are you able, or is someone from your company able to attend for a little while, just in case we have questions that come up?
For next Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
I believe so.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we'll have some questions, I'm sure. Be nice just to ask you and input.
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe if there are specific questions, since we haven't had a lot of time, we can let them know some of those questions ahead of time, because it's a lot of data, I'm sure, and it would be helpful for them to know what scope of questions there might be, so it can be productive.
And you're available from now until Tuesday, correct?
Sure.
And since we, since we going to add this here to this special meeting, the charter review, there's something else. Because I see it's mighty quiet, ain't nobody saying nothing on that. The charter view, I think we do that every 10 years, but ain't nobody saying nothing about it. I think we need to add that on to the special meeting also.
For that, I think we have a hard deadline of getting it on a ballot, which we have sufficient time for. So instead of having a meeting that may go six hours, we could put that on the next agenda to talk about.
I make $1,000 a month, $1,000. That's what I make a month.
But you also want to make sure people are coming. We've drawn on for four hours.
I make $1,000 a month. Ms. Carly, could you let me talk, please? I make $1,000 a month, and I put in well over 40 hours a week. And I'm saying that to say, the charter review, it's important to me, for it should be important to you.
Oh, it is.
Because everybody, look at the time that they gave up to do a charter review, and now we not even talking about it. That's all I asked for. If it don't go on the meeting, it don't go on the meeting. But we don't sit here and wait, and it's like all their time that they done spent. And I can talk about my wife, the time that she done spent at the meeting. I don't want it to go to waste, because they got a lot of things on there that's very important that need to go to the poll that we can vote on. So it's a lot on there. This is important. Everything we talk about is important, because the salary, the, the pay, I'm quite sure the guys looking for their pay right now. The ladies looking for their pay right now. I'm scared to ask you something, ma'am, because you get scared when I ask you something, but I'm quite sure everybody want their pay right now. So they don't want to wait the next week, next month. So if we going to have a discussion about pay, we need to start talking about this now, because what he done gave us, and I'm just saying me, and from what the workers have told me, they not satisfied with it. They not.
Was that a specific department or something that we could maybe address or?
Ms. Lacy, I'm glad you asked that, and HR, I see you in here too. When these people talk to me, honestly, they talk to me not to say their name. If they trust me, I'm not going to say their name. If they felt comfortable with you and HR, they would talk to y'all. But they don't feel comfortable, and that's sad, when employees don't feel comfortable talking to HR and Lacy.
I just wondered if they had looked at the numbers in the report? So that's all.
Yeah, they done looked at them.
So this item will be on our next meeting on May the 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill.
Okay, we are going to go ahead to our introduction of ordinance to adopt.
Oh, we have, oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Introduction of an ordinance to adopt a redistricting plan for the city of Hammond, Bill Blair.
Good evening, Council Public. My name is William Blair. I am the Hammond demographer, since you hired me to help you do your redistricting. My other job is as the demographer with the state legislature, where I've worked the last 25 years doing redistricting for the state. So I have a presentation tonight to talk about some of the background that some people may have missed the first time I was here several months ago. Somebody give the background of what's going on with redistricting in Hammond, and then show the two plans we have moving forward that need to be adopted on May 3rd, I believe. So very quickly, I'm not going to belabor this too much. What is redistricting? It is moving people around within your districts to try and achieve population equality. And that is the key thing we have to get accomplished, is equalizing the population within each council district. And we have sort of guidelines based on federal and state law, that after every decennial census, we have to take care of this issue, which we're doing in Hammond. Hammond has the authority, has the governing authority for the city council, has a governing authority for Hammond, has the responsibility to do this work. Census was released April 26th. The kind of data we can use in Hammond was released this fall. And Hammond specifically because of its home rule charter must adopt a redistricting plan no later than May 7th of 2022. Now, why do we do all this every 10 years? Well, federal and state law requires it, and a collection of Supreme Court decisions provide the guidelines under which that happens. So why is 2020 different? I mean, I'm sure, bless you, I'm sure we can all answer that question already. COVID, basically. The president received the data four months late, Hammond received this data, the state Louisiana received this data seven months late, which means this has been accelerated process to try and get this done. Historically, would have been done with Hammond early in the spring. Unfortunately, that's not happened, because we didn't have the data. But here we are anyway. Here specifically Hammond's home rule charter, saying you have to adopt a new plan six months before reelection. Election six months from now is November 8th, which is why May 7th is the date we have to get this done by. Qualifying is in July 20th through 23rd, and we have to provide the Secretary of State Hammond's new plan no later than June 20th, which is good, we want to get it to him sooner. You can imagine how many plans the Secretary of State's about to get by June 20th. The sooner we get it to them, the sooner we get to the registrar of Tangier Parish, make sure your districts are implemented correctly. So the sooner the better, truly. So very quickly, what are our requirements when we're doing this kind of work? As I mentioned previously, equal population, 14th Amendment of the Constitution, the concept of one man, one vote. So when somebody casts a ballot for one, one council member, it needs to have sort of an equal weight as everybody else in the city. So we all are equally represented. Two concepts you'll hear a lot, ideal population and deviation. Essentially, that means we take the population of Hammond, divide it by five. You can see at the bottom there, that gets you about 4,000 people per district. The allowable, allowable deviation is about 5% on either side of that ideal. That's requirement of federal law or Supreme Court decisions, essentially. So it's around 200 people flexibility between each district. I include this slide just because I find it interesting. When you think about equal population, equal representation, you would think that that was something that was in the founding, founding of our Constitution. Unfortunately, not. The Supreme Court did not decide we need to equally represent each person in each district until 1962, after the state of Texas would not redistrict its congressional districts for 61 years. That's why we have that concept of equal population, one man, one vote, not till 1962. Nobody believes that when you tell them that, but it's true. How can we, where's that 5% flexibility come from? Why do we have it? Well, we have it for a variety of reasons. Really, at the bottom, you can see sort of these state policies that have been referenced by the Supreme Court as an acceptable reason to deviate inside that 5%. Communities of interest, that means your neighborhoods, it could be in geography, roads, railroads, whatever the case may be. Compactness, meaning you want something that looks nice, if you can get it. Also, interestingly enough, preserving cores of prior districts, meaning we take your current districts and we try and keep it as close to that we can when possible, under the concept that, this has been done a few times previously, right? And previous administrations, previous councils, previous legislatures have confected districts which makes sense for their communities already. So why are we trying to recreate the wheel if we don't have to? And interestingly enough, also, void contest between incumbents is also, interestingly enough, a reason. The second big thing besides equal population is the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Under Section 2, you see it here, do not craft any law that abridges the voting power on account of race, color, or status as a member of a language minority group. So that covers the entire country. Every jurisdiction in this country is covered by Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. So we need to take account for that. If you've been here before, you may have heard of something called Section 5 preclearance by the Department of Justice. Up until 2013, when Hammond, if Hammond had enacted a redistricting plan, we would have sent that to the Department of Justice for a review by DOJ to make sure we were, we were complying with, essentially complying with Section 2 of the Vote Rights Act. You see the list of the actors under Section 5, which were all put there in the 1960s due to some very, be diplomatic and say terrible Jim Crow era sort of voting qualification, poll taxes, and much worse. So those states, those localities are in there for a reason, from some bad behavior in previous elections. Section 5, actually, Section 4, the jurisdictions in Section 5 was ruled. Section 5, actually, Section 4, the jurisdictions in Section 5 was ruled unconstitutional in 192013 by Shelby County v. Holder, meaning it just ejected all of the list of jurisdictions You see the rationale from the Chief's Justice on that, arguing that times had changed and these states and localities were being singled out unnecessarily. That's a debate beyond the scope of this presentation, but let's just say that if a jurisdiction behaves badly, it can be reinserted into Section 5 by a federal court, which we desperately want to avoid. State legal requirements, basically, this is the deal for Hammond. Get your district between 5% deviations, adhere to your redistricting criteria, be conscious of the Voting Rights Act, and please adopt this plan by May 7th. This is literally doesn't concern y'all, it's just in here because I have done this presentation a million times. You've adopted an ordinance already identifying you needed to redistrict. You have to adopt your ordinance by a majority. Really, whole election precincts don't matter for Hammond. So what about Hammond? This is why we're here tonight. Here's Hammond's census data. Now, from 2010 to 2020, allegedly Hammond shrunk by about 435 people. The racial makeup of Hammond remained generally the same, and the mid-40s, black, white. I would also say that if you're stunned that Hammond did not grow, you're probably not alone, with many jurisdictions in this state and around the country who are very upset with the way the census was conducted, the populations that were missed. There's a way to ask the census to review a jurisdiction, to try and have population added, which can affect your federal funding for the next 10 years. What it will not do is affect your redistricting. The data you receive, the data we receive to do your redistricting is the data that must be used for your registering efforts. Here are the current boundaries of Hammond's council districts. When you add the 2020 population to them, as you can see, District 1 was too low, District 4 is too low, District 5 too high, District 3 too high, and District 2 nicely within the range, but unfortunately in the middle of the city. Now, I should also say, it's really easy to draw one district perfect, much harder to draw five. So, whoops, sorry. And here are your districts by race and population, current districts with the 2020 census data in it. District 1 and District 3 are your minority-majority districts. District 4, I would characterize that as a toss-up, a competitive black-white district. In 2010, District 4 was 55% white voting age population. After the 2020 data is put into it, it's a, you know, a 45-43 voting age population. So when we attempt to equalize the population in our districts, we have two plans, a Plan A and a Plan B. These plans were confected after consultation with every member of the council, taking their advice on how they foresaw their communities of interest, the geography in their district, so on so forth. And it will be up to the council to determine which of these two plans best fits the representational nature of Hammond. All I wanted to say, I did not just draw these by myself and bring them here tonight. So Plan A, equalizes the district, the data on it. I would say this is the most radical change from, if you go back to how it kind of looks right here. If you fast forward, similar. Ms. Gonzalez's district changes the most radically. There's an old adage, when we do redistricting, at this level, much less the state, when you're in the middle, you're in trouble, generally speaking, because there's nowhere to go on the outer boundaries of Hammond. You can only fix problems in the middle, essentially. Go look at the Senate districts in Rapids and Grant Parish, you'll see what happens at the state legislature. So what do we get? We get 1 and 3 still maintain as strong minority-majority districts. We have District 4 as a competitive black-white district, and everybody within the population Plan B, similar to the current confection of your current districts, nibbling around the edges, getting everybody within the deviation, making as small a change as possible. And again, 1 and 3, strong minority-majority districts, District 4, a competitive district, and all the districts within a population deviation. And that's it. And it'll be up to the council to determine which of these two plans, with input from the public, I presume, to make a decision on which one best works for Hammond.
Can you send us the demographics for the two plans in the current?
Absolutely.
So we can have that to look at as well. And thank you for a lot of meetings and time going over this. None of us have done this before, so it was almost painful.
It's never not painful, to be honest.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this matter?
I'll just state, since we're going to talk about it again, but go ahead and say it once, as I've put in an email to the council a while ago, I am adamantly opposed to changing my district so drastically, especially since mine was within the range, and I hope we can continue to have conversations about that. I think that, now seeing from your presentation, one of the principles is to keep the core district the way it is, if possible. That should be a very big factor in our consideration for this. We all have parts of our district which may not be what, you know, you think of immediately, you know? Kip, you have the Country Club, you also have Martin Luther King Park. You have, you know, Woodbridge and Southeastern, and I have Clark Park and Forbes Farm and Downtown and Southeastern, you know? Sam, you have Villa West, Lincoln Park, you know, Blackburn Avenue, and then, of course, you know, Devon, you have, you know, you have the, probably the tax base of the city being the mall and then Mooney Park and everything, and it's a diverse representation of multi-districts, and I think that that's important, and I think it's working, and I would like it to stay as close to that as possible, unless there's a good reason for it, and I haven't seen a good reason for Plan A. But I'm sure we'll have more discussion about it later.
Sam?
I'm good. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir. Nice working with each one of you. Pleasure.
Thank you, Bill.
Right, could I get a motion to introduce and set for public hearing, special meeting on May 3rd, 2022 at 5:30 PM?
Still moved.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right, pick back up on regular agenda to Resolution Number 6.
A resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at 503 Wilbert Dangerfield Drive, 85% damaged, located in Council District Number 1. The owner is Nathaniel Ruffin Jr., 901 Sun Lake, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, Bobby Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Best for last, huh?
Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes. We got a lot for you next couple of months. The recommendation for 503 Wilbert Dangerfield and the percentage of damage of 85% is to demolish the structure. I've had several conversations with the current owner, and he's not in opposition of demolition, he's just encouraging more of the same in some of the other streets of that district that he may consider as bad as his, and we have those on the radar as well.
You're saying he's okay with demolition, but he wants us to demolish the other houses on the street too?
Some more.
Okay, I got you.
He wants more.
Anyone from the public here on this matter? Any other question from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution Number 7.
A resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at 813 East Church Street, 97% damaged, located in Council District 1. The owner, owner of the estate of, I'm sorry, Willie Lust Sr., care of Janice Lusk, P.O. Box 354, Hammond, Louisiana, 70404, and Dorothy Mitchell, P.O., Post Office Box 354, Hammond, Louisiana, 70404, Bobby Mitchell.
813 East Church, 97% damage. In addition to this calculations, there was a unfortunate situation where a tree collapsed the home, so it's obviously in need of demolition. I spoke with the, one of the owners, one of the heirs, Ms. Janice as well, and she actually wants to demolish the structure herself. I've made her aware of the council's requirements for having it done within 30 days. Otherwise, the city will bid and move forward.
And after that conversation with Ms. Lust, what did she decide to do?
Supposedly got an acquired demolition permit. Not really sure how that'll work out. We oftentimes get promises from property owners and they don't follow through. So we just wanted to make that known, that we've been in conversation with her.
Remind us again, Bobby, when we, if we approve with no restrictions or additions to the resolution, there's 30 days for them to do it pretty much anyway, built in to, before the city will get it done?
That's a state requirement. By state statute, they allow 30 days to demolish or appeal.
Okay.
The decision of the council.
And so in the past, we've gone longer than 30 days, but that was for special circumstances or requests or whatnot, but if we just pass it as is, then it's, they have 30 days anyway.
Correct.
Bobby, I just wanted to double check on the name there, since these are pretty close. So I see on the agenda, it's Willie Lust, L-U-S-T, and then Janice Lusk, L-U-S-K.
It's L-U-S-K.
L-U-S-K.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got that straight.
So it's the estate of Willie Lusk?
Kip, this in your district, did anybody say anything about it?
I've received calls on this house.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask this a question. Do we get a 30 days, or we just go on, start getting it towed down now?
We have, Councilman, we have to allow the 30 days, that's a state statute requirement to allow that grace period for the owner to have the opportunity to respond for an appeal attempt, or to have that property in compliance as the owner.
Okay, I'm gonna say this here, and I really thought we was doing better. I really thought once you come before us, that every house on here, everything was already taken care of, so I see we right back at the first year I set up here, and God knows, I don't like to go backwards, because I'm not getting nowhere when I go about. Why this wasn't taken care of before it came before us? I'm asking why we didn't talk to her for 40, 30 days?
Talk to the owners?
Yes, the owners.
Yeah, we, by state requirement, we're obligated to do proper notice to the owner, owner or owners, depending on the situation. After such time as notice, the owner has the opportunity, the letter states that they have the opportunity here at this public meeting to show just cause why their home should or should not be demolished or repaired.
Okay, are anybody here on this home?
I would guess that she's probably not here because she's sure that it needs to be torn down, she's already stated that she's in agreement with the demolition, and trying to make an attempt herself to do so.
Well, that's one reason she should have been here, and I mean, it'd help us out a whole lot. But it's not in my district, so.
Is the tree still on it?
Yes.
That bid will include the demolition and removal as per the council's request to remove all slabs, driveways, sidewalks, any other objects that may be attached to the structure.
And so this would be their tree then too, right?
Anyone else from the public on this matter? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution Number 8.
A resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at 908 East Coleman Avenue, 100% damaged, located in Council District 1. The owner is, owner is estate of Lucille Horland, 908 East Coleman Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403, Community Connections Charitable Foundation, LLC, 5154 Faulkner Drive, Darrell, Louisiana, Bobby Mitchell.
908 East Coleman, 100% damage, our recommendation is to demolish.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Come up to the mic, give your name and address, please.
My name's Jackie. I understand what Bobby said. I brought it to attention about Grace Quares East Mary. We have a lot of houses been there. On my property, I had cars, they come to arrest me about my cars, but what about these houses on East Mary? They need to be demolished, y'all say y'all ain't got no city money, they got drugs coming in, they got guns in it. I told the policeman about it. One day I was exercising, see the young man went into this house and stuff like that, he peeping at me and stuff like that. Why y'all ain't demolishing these houses? You talking about them houses? What about East Mary? Crime is bad in Grace Quares on East Mary. You got this house on this corner, got the house on the corner. My car was there, the young man that worked with you, sitting here talking to me about my car, he wants to talk to these people, but what about these demolishing these houses in Grace Quares? You need to demolish these houses. These houses been sitting up here. One house called a fire, and the rest of houses is still standing up there, and I talked to y'all and said, what are y'all gonna do about these houses on East Mary? Why y'all not demolish these houses and stuff? Because I used to exercise every day, but I got scared after someone got killed in Grace Quares on East Mary, I got scared, because y'all don't do nothing about it.
And I say, Ms. Jackie?
Yes, sir.
And see, what Ms. Jackie said, that's the issue that I have. The issue that I have, here you got people that stay next to this property, trying to get this house towed down, and trying to get that house towed down, but yet, we the ones was elected by people like Ms. Jackie, and yet, she could come here and complain to me all day long, and I could sit there and call the building permit office, but yet, these still houses don't get on the list, and so... And so everything Ms. Jackie said, we talk about crime, we talk about guns, we talk about drugs, and law enforcement know where everything at in every community, but yet, if Ms. Jackie tell me they got a house on Moonie Avenue need to be tore down, I call the building permit office or whatever, I'm still like, I haven't done nothing that she asked me to do, and that's one of the problems that I have. And God knows, I was trying not to even talk about this here stuff because I wanted to go smooth, but it can't go smooth when I hear people like her talking, and this the issue that I have with in District Three, and yet, I only see one house on District Three, so it's like, and I know Bobby, you can see, but it's like, I don't know, something wrong with my glasses and something wrong with the community glasses because we got tons of houses need to be tore down in the area, and yet, it's like we overlooking these houses. I don't even know the process. When I asked the process, and you and I, we done talked several times about Washington Avenue. I talked about the house, the Wells house, be exact, you know, that need to be tore down. Everybody in the community complaining about it, rats, Perry Lane. I just got a text not too long ago about the wood rats, Eric McCray house, you know what I'm talking about. This man been dead for over twenty-five years, and yet, the neighbors complaining about the house. I don't have to deal with the rats. I don't have to deal with the snakes, but yet, they dealing with it. But these the same people that voted for me, and yet, I can't even ask, can we get this house tore down? When can we get this house on the list? So you really make it hard, I'm gonna say on me, you really make it hard on the city councilmen when they ask, can we look at this house? You know, ninety-eight percent, eighty-eight percent, you know? We need to have a better process about looking at these houses and doing these houses, you know? I don't have, I saw the house on, the one we were talking about on Church Street, I saw the house, I saw the tree, you know? It ain't just got like that yesterday, but the tree, I don't know that from the storm and that. I saw that house today, be exact. But what Ms. Jackie talking about, these are houses that I see before I even got in office, and now it's going on four years, and these houses nowhere on the list, you know? Then I know somehow you might pop up with a list tomorrow about these houses I'm talking about, but I like to see these houses on the list.
The way I want to say, these houses I'm talking about, I lived on Lord James Drive all my, all the years and stuff. This man died. These houses been abandoned since he been dead. I can't call the man name. And one of the houses our church have, and my pastor said that I can get it moved, but getting it moved because so much money to move on my property, and it need to be tore down. All these houses in Grace Quarters, not just Grace Quarters, all over the city of Hammond. These houses need to be tore down because these people is bringing guns. They bringing guns. They bringing drugs in these houses and stuff like that. I told the police one time, he came Grace Quarters, I said, go look in that house and stuff like that. Go look in it. One time, my cousin told me on Lord James Drive, whatever that street is, she said, these boys was rapping in there, had guns and stuff and this and that. I said, why you ain't call the police? Well, I was scared to call the police because if I call the police, the police might try to shoot them or something, but anything go on, I'm constantly calling. My name is Jacqueline Taylor. I live at eight oh nine South Chester. I'm a patrolman. Y'all police working stuff, I look at, I run around the city, police in the park, setting in the park, not doing their job, the city workers not doing their job. Had a problem with somebody came to my house and cursed me out about my water bill, spent two hundred dollars in February, March is forty dollars, and he cursed me out. I talked to the man, we don't need city workers like that working. When you come to my house and curse me out like a dog, called my friend, an M.F. to say he not work, worry about a city job? What kind of worker you talking about? Give him a break? You think people like that need to be working for the city getting raised? We need to examine these people. We need to see what kind of record they got, what kind of people we got working for the city. We don't need no kid like you come to my house and challenge me about my water bill and tell me you ain't worried about the D job, and then call my friend, oh, let this man settle, you know? You call this man a M.F. And the police called me and asked me, what you think? I said, you should get rid of him. If you'd have came to somebody else's house there to challenge him. I said, get out of my property. He didn't want to leave. One of the city workers came there, had to move, my cousin George told me, I called the police four times. The police didn't answer, but when they came there, they said, what a gun? I said, I got a gun. I got a gun from my house, never been used. The police said, here my gun, I got papers for my gun.
Thank you, Ms. Jack. No, no, thank you, Ms. Jack. But let me say this here, in Kip District also, we had a pastor come here. Kip, what's the name of that church? Saint Paul? Yeah, Saint Paul Baptist Church. The pastor come here three years ago complaining about the building. We know where the building at, and yet, I don't see this on the list, so it's like, it's like we wasting these people time when they take time to come out here and complain about something and nothing being done. So I like to see that building get on the list, but it's amazing how a lot of these buildings and trailers, somehow they skipping the list, and I'm talking about this been past four years before I got in office, and I'm talking about something should have been took place.
Do you have a list that you working on right now? Are you familiar with they're talking about on East Mary?
I'm very familiar with the.
Is there a reason?
I'm very familiar with Hammond. My issue a lot of times with some of these structures is that because there is a police problem or violation of loitering of that, that does not qualify the structure to be torn down. It's problematic, but it's not a structural issue. We monitor houses to make sure that they meet what's required as a fifty percent of structural damage in order to submit them to you all for condemnation. Now, we do have an ongoing list. I'm bringing another group of six in May. That's a mixture of District Three and District Four, but if you have, and I say this all the time, if you have a concern in your district, email me an address, text me, call me on my cell phone. My cell phone is public. We don't have to come to the council meeting and talk about locations that we've never heard of. If we can submit these to the code enforcement department, they'll be placed on the list. We are monitoring and following locations throughout the city. I have an ongoing list. There are at least an additional fifteen on the list that are being monitored that don't qualify for demolition, although they're problematic. People are loitering, you know, they're trespassing, but that's not a code enforcement issue. That's a police issue.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, Bob, I'm talking about, you know where Eric stayed at, Eric McCray on Perry Lane. I'm talking about, we know the condition of that house. I don't know if you know it or not because.
House that's in the woods?
Yes, yes, the woods, I grew up around the house. That house and on Washington Avenue, the Wells house.
Six oh one, it's on our list as well.
Yeah, and so I'm saying this here because the people called me, and real stuff, I know the district pretty good, but they make me see things that I don't see when they call and tell me about it. And so, but I'm talking about the pastor on Saint Paul, Saint Paul Church. He came up here and talked about the house, so this is a structure that if it's eighty percent, we need to let him know that, that it's eighty percent and you can't tear it down, fifty percent. I'm saying if somehow we can get it to him, I think that'll make him happy versus just going back and forth on this here.
That's what I was referencing to was the three that she was mentioning on East Mary, do they not qualify or are they not on radar or you didn't know about?
We have those listed. The addresses are nine oh eight, nine ten, East Mary, and we also have, this is one that's in District One as well, that we just condemned, which is nine oh eight East Coleman. That's one block north of Mary. And the deterioration of the white houses, she's speaking in terms of structurally, they're solid houses, but we have torn down multiple houses on Mary, Park Street, Iowa Street that are in this general vicinity. I can't change the process of the structural damage of the houses, and I can't falsify information because it's a problem house. There just needs to be more attention given whether it's police or, you know, council or we come as a collaborative effort to do something, but we can't tear a house down just because it's empty. And it may not look aesthetically nice when you're passing by, but it doesn't qualify for demolition.
So actually this here, sorry, Sam.
You go ahead.
Actually, this here, that house Ms. Jackie talking about, do they have boards all around the house where nobody can enter the house?
They had, nine oh eight and nine ten were pretty secure houses. There's an adjacent house east, west of those at nine oh six that's currently being repaired, and he has gutted, the gentleman has gutted the windows out, and he's supposedly repairing the house.
Yeah.
Our requirements for repair is that he has to start the repair within a six-month timeframe of acquiring the permit, and as long as he's doing continuous repairs periodically on the house.
Yeah, and the reason I'm saying that, Ms. Jackie, she stay in the area, so I don't know, but if she having problem, was it drug, guns or whatever, if the house were boarded up, do the city pay for that? Or they have the property owner pay for it?
We, the city pays for all.
No, I'm talking about board, boarding the house up.
We had to board the house. We'll notify the owner if we had to board it. We will pay for it.
Okay.
But we place a lien on the property, and that property owner has the right to pay for that lien.
Okay, yeah, because if she having an issue, I don't stay there, over there, you don't stay over there, I'm quite sure don't none of us stay over there, but seem like we need to try to do something. It's a house that she said, it ain't just happened yesterday, you know? So whatever means that we need to do.
I'm all in favor of it.
I would like to be a part of it because, you know, even the housing District Three, if it's fifty percent, seventy percent, whatever you say, if we put boards around it, I won't see it, and can't nobody go in it. And I'm quite sure once they tear the boards down, Ms. Jackie gonna come back up here and let us know they tore the boards down, huh, Ms. Jackie? Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I was, that's all I was referring to. I know you can't falsify information. I just wanted to know if you knew about those houses she's referring to, and they did not meet the qualifications to get tore down, or if they just, you haven't made it to that on the list yet?
There are several houses that are on the list that may or may not require or qualify for demolition. It's a time factor calculated. We also have to, per the council and administration recommendation, to submit those owners to our C. attorney to confirm proper ownership so that we're not notifying the wrong owners as well. That's why you see multiple owners in this group here, to make sure we're properly notifying the owners. Just call my office, call my office, email me, call my cell. I mean, I have no problem at all with complaints. I've been doing this for twenty-nine years. I'm not running from the job, so we want to do it, but we can't have eyes, he just submitted the five districts, we can't have eyes citywide. There, you know, we're monitoring demolition, abandoned vehicles, tall grass, trash, debris. You know, we handle dumpster areas. We're an department of three guys in the field, and also do permitting and inspections as well till recently, so it's not a, it's not a problem to handle those issues, just notify us.
It sound like y'all need a raise, huh? Huh? No, you can look at me.
Yes, indeed.
Anyone else from the public on this matter? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
A resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at eight oh four East Robinson Street. House one hundred percent damage, shed ninety-eight percent damage, located in Council District One. The owner is Chris Burton, two eight zero three nine, Trelle's Burton Road, Franklinton, Louisiana, seven zero four three eight, Bobby Mitchell.
Four East Robinson have a combination as stated, a house that's a hundred percent damaged as well as an adjacent shed that's ninety-eight percent damaged. Recommendation is to demolish both structures.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Any question from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario? Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number ten.
A resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at one five two five South Morris Boulevard, ninety-two percent damage, located in District, Council District Three. The owner is Mendley, four 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 five two Haley Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, Bobby Mitchell.
Fifteen twenty-five South Morrison, District Three.
I heard you.
We recommend.
I got a house now, it just pops up on my phone.
Ninety-two percent.
Just making sure we're clear there too, the thing that says Morris versus Morrison.
What did the owner say?
No comments from the owner, no response from the owner. We have proof of receipt of certified notice by signature. Oftentimes, they're aware that it's coming, they're just kind of waiting for the letter.
Is this house two colors? The picture looks like it's literally divided in half and.
South Morrison.
Yeah.
Now, there's a, there's a.
Is that one structure?
There's an East Robinson, eight oh four East Robinson, it's two structures. The South Morrison location is, because of the color.
And the sightings and everything.
It's just aesthetic choice, I guess. It's one house.
Is the owner in here? Tear it down, make a motion.
Bobby, to be clear, this is fifteen twenty-five South Morrison Boulevard, correct?
Correct.
Was that your motion, councilman?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number eleven.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at two three one zero Center Avenue, one hundred percent damage, located in Council District Four. The owner, estate of Louise M. Stahl, care of William A. Lepore. He, Post Office Box eighteen sixteen, Hammond, Louisiana, and the estate of Johnny Stahl, two three one zero Center Street, Hammond, Louisiana.
Twenty-three ten Center Avenue, a hundred percent damage. Recommendation is to demolish. I did receive a call beginning of April from the grandson of the owner who intends to tear the house down. He also called today just to confirm that he had thirty days to do so. There's a chance that it may be demolished prior to the city hiring.
Anyone from the public?
Is the grandson in here?
Any other question from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Is it, we giving him thirty days or we just about to tear it down?
We have to, we have to allow the thirty days. We have to allow by state.
Okay, now I just want to know, make sure what I'm voting on. Aye.
Bobby, thanks for the pictures of the follow-ups on the demos. That's helpful, and I've had, and thank you for your department with responding to a couple of trouble spots and actually people getting them demolished before they had to come to us, so that's obviously helpful. I appreciate that.
So glad you said that. I wanted to give a shout out to the owner, just from a, several phone calls to Mr. Darrell Smith. He tore down two structures, one at twelve hundred North Oak and another, I believe the address is three ten North Magnolia, North Magnolia Corner, Magnolia and Church, I believe it is.
They were bad.
Southeast corner, so he would, and he also has a three hundred South Oak that's supposedly going to be torn down in the month of May.
All right, you never did say nothing about your raise. You think your department need a raise?
Absolutely.
Okay, then, that's what I want to hear.
Absolutely.
All right.
Way overdue.
And it's recommended. And it's recommended in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you all.
All right. Now we're down to reports, mayor.
So, president, do you wanna do the introduction of the ordinance to transfer the funds?
Okay, yes, let's go ahead and do it, thank you, Lisa.
So, the language on it, you would be amending the agenda to do an introduction of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget to transfer two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from the sales tax fund balance, which is fund two oh three, to Jackson Park, which is project one two two zero eight.
That was my motion to amend.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Now, a motion to introduce as, um, presented and amended.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you again, Lisa. Reports, mayor.
Uh, as we know, fourth of July will be coming up, once again, prices have increased, actually doubled. So, just for food for thought, I'll be coming to you, would like to know what your consideration is, if we can double that. Uh, we usually put about ten thousand in and it's gonna cost twenty thousand to do the fireworks and the bounty houses and everything else for the kids, and just something for you to think about.
Any other council reports?
Uh, I wanted to remind everybody, there's Veterans Breakfast, um, on Thursday. If I, at, uh, I think it starts at eight thirty in the Kenny Center, first one we've had in a long time. Um, also, I wanted to, um, commend and compliment Councilman Andrews for the, uh, agenda. I think it's, uh, I think it's helpful that we're having some things, um, streamlined a little bit and I see that it mimics and, and mirrors what the parish council does, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms., uh, Joyce, you want, you wanna come up? Did Bobby leave out?
Yeah. Good evening, uh, hello to everyone. I'm Joyce Cox at four oh four Phoenix Square here in Hammond, Louisiana. Uh, my pastor is Anthony Cox, he's Punchetulah Church in West Side. And I'd like to say thanks so much to my councilman, Devon Wells, who's been doing a great job in, um, our neighborhood. I've been, um, in Hammond on Pine Street, Phoenix Square in Spruce for over sixty years. And I, um, thank God so much for Mr. Wells, thank God for the councilmen, the mayor, everyone here, council ladies, everyone here, thank you all for the stop sign that we have received. Thank you all for the, um, conditional expanding, um, with the salon and the residential that we did the last time we was here at the meeting. And I thank God for all the ones that came that couldn't come back today, my family support, Erica Williams that came in and all those that supported me, um, with, with, uh, the last meeting we was at. Right now, we're ready to move forward in our, um, salon and, and hair, salon and duplex. But at this time, I have wanted to, um, ask the mayor, and I thank God for the mayor, and I sent my email and sending over Chief Bergeron and, um, Captain Squish. Thank you. They came and I appreciate that so much. And they're gonna start cleaning up and looking into the matter of cleaning up this nine hundred block of South Pine. And here is some pictures of how this community look. Now, before I can get a, um, salon over there, duplex over there, I would like, you know, to get it clean. And the city is working with me, the mayor is working with me, and I thank you all for moving so expeditiously on this. Thank you all so much, I just want you all to see just how it look right now. And, um, but when the children get off the school bus, they cannot get on the sidewalk because the sidewalk debrided and it's not wide enough, so they have to walk in the middle of the street. The elderly person have to drive his scooter in the middle of the street because the sidewalk is not wide enough or it's all debrided with grass and everything. And I have one neighbor that moved from Baton Rouge and they have some new homes in that community and she moved here, uh, from Baton Rouge. And we just wanted to get this community clean. Also, you see the abandoned, um, vehicles there, that's been there for a while. I've been living on Phoenix, but I own property on Spruce, I own property on, um, Pine. And now that I've been shifted to do the duplex on Pine, I'm just trying to get that area cleaned up. That's, um, what we're trying to do. And as I was talking with Mr. Jeffrey about what can, you know, we could do in that community, he shared with me the home ecrosies, I'm not saying it right. It says, "As an accessory, we actively carry on only by residential members of the family occupancy." The dwelling from which the activity is carried, carried out and not generally nausea to neighbors. No additional traffic, no buses, no trucks, other than a school bus or pickup truck or vans will be kept in the premises of the dwelling being used in the home occupancy. So, now, with that being said, that he shared that with me, that mean no eighteen wheelers, no abandoned vehicles should be in our community, only school bus or trucks. And as you all could see, there is abandoned vehicles in the community. So, she's gonna finish up with him.
Hello, my name is Gloria Von Sellers and like she said, I'm a transplant from Baton Rouge. Uh, thirteen years with state of Louisiana, twenty years in the school system. Um, I liked the neighborhood. The house was nice and new. However, across the street from me since Hurricane, Adam, Adam, oh, excuse me. The trees are uprooted, there's a lot of debris and everything. I don't know who owns this or what the process is to get it cleaned up. Um, but even more so, my biggest concern is down on the corner, uh, she has visuals, there's a dump truck. I don't know if it's locked or whatever, but heaven forbid if a child, and I've seen two little boys, maybe nine and ten years old, open the door and get in that dump truck. Um, first day of school for me was always the biggest day because you see them come in, some are frowning, some are smiling. Uh, at the end of the year, hopefully more are smiling. But they were all treated the same because it's important that what we do now impacts the future of children. We need to try and do better with, um, saving this environment and, um, leaving some type of legacy for them to be able to raise their children. But, um, it would be nice, across from me, there is no sidewalk, did you know that? It's, it's nonexistent. Um, the, houses where I live, it's like maybe four of them or five. Everybody owns a dog, so it's a dog-friendly community. Um, I would love to ride my bike, but I can't, so I didn't even bring it. But, um, there's so many things that you could do. Um, the nearest park is not that far away from me, but it takes a little more effort to get in the car and drive there and try and walk when maybe I go across the street on the sidewalk and go up and down maybe ten times. Well, actually five. But, like I said, my biggest concern is for you guys to consider, um, doing something about removing that dump truck. Um, I don't know, like I said, what the process is. If it's a private owner, would they be responsible for removing these trees that are already uprooted and debris and everything? And hurricane season is about upon us, so what's already there is gonna just get worse. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
One zero zero six South Pine, zip code is seven zero four zero three. I learned that Hammond has like three zip codes?
Yes, yes ma'am, uh, 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 Ms. Joyce. Mr. Bobby, did she show you these pictures, what she talking about? Okay. Okay, so we are, uh, doing something about this? Uh-huh. Okay, 'cause I know, I done got several calls from her. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, 'cause I'm looking at this pickup truck, and I did talk to Brad about it, the pickup truck is on the sidewalk. Yeah.
And what about the eighteen, well, is, is it on the, the screech? 'Cause when I get ready to bag.
It's in the city right of way, so, and it shouldn't be there, and then looking at this here truck, and I'm gonna go and say it. Uh, we had a man get beat, uh, from being parked on the sidewalk, so I don't know what we gonna do about this one here. And this one been on the sidewalk for the longest, so I'm gonna go and say it for the record, what it be known. But these trucks, and they in the city right of way, I mean, ain't no ifs, ands, but. Because right where these trucks parked at, and I know this for a fact, my cousin stay on Wells Drive, her car was parked, uh, two feet in the road and the rest in their yard. The police came out there, had a tow truck tow the car. You know, talking about the car was abandoned, but the owner knew who the car was for. That's how fast they towed the car, and I'm saying, see, I had to go back and forth with Ms. Joyce 'cause I told, I don't know the rules, so get in touch with your department and let's see how to do this here. And Ms. Joyce had reached out to everybody she can reach out to. And we all know that, uh, uh, email with the mayor, everything, the police department, so. And, and I say this here, everybody don't have the energy to do that. You know, so seem like we should have maybe make one phone call and it be hounding, you know. We know what she trying to do, she trying to clean the neighborhood up. And we shouldn't send her through a whole lot to clean the neighborhood up, and, and I appreciate everything she trying to do. Thank you, Ms. Joyce, for everything, and I'm gonna say this here, I appreciate your patience, uh, and, and hopefully, we can move forward in getting something done. When the people in the community have a problem, have a complaint, and I, this is what I go through. I don't know about no other council, they gonna call me, they gonna call me, they gonna ask me. And if it's for the police department, I tell them, "Go to the police department." If it's for the building permit, uh, office, I tell them, "Go there." I say, "You go do these steps first," but she done reached out to everybody. And I would like to see something get done, you know, we shouldn't have to give nobody sixty days, ninety days, a hundred days. She's moving forward, trying to move forward her project, and she can't do nothing. And it's not even on her property, you know? So, but if I saw this here somewhere else, and we know that, that this would be out the way with no issue whatsoever, so as a city, we need to all do better, you know? And Bobby, you told me what y'all problem was, y'all lacking money, so I understand now, so do what y'all can.
And thank y'all so much, and I know, and I have the faith and belief we gonna make it happen because we are all on the same team, and I thank you all, especially the mayor, for answering me so fast, you know, and sending the guys out, and they were so nice about it, and they, they, they gonna take care of it, I believe, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any other reports?
Yeah, they, um, I've gotten a lot of calls about land being cleared on North Oak, uh, right across from, um, Woodbridge subdivision. And a couple of things I just need to, want to, want to put on the record. One, that's not in the city limits, it's on the par, it's, it's, it's in the parish property. And I have been in contact with parish officials for the last several weeks. The property, to, from what I have been told, is still declared a wetlands. Uh, there are no permits that have been granted or, or even requested for any kind of building on that. Again, I, I've, I've spoke to numerous parish officials and most recently, right before this meeting, and I've asked them to put out some type of announcement, public announcement, uh, as to what is actually happening on that property because there is a lot, a lot of concern from residents in that whole area. So, you know, I just want to let everybody know that we are, you know, it, it, it is on the forefront of everybody's mind and especially the parishes, uh, a lot of agencies have been called. But I, again, I want the parish to put out some type of official statement on that. Pete, I don't know if you know anything, but wanna add anything to that?
I've made some calls, apparently, they wanted to track build there, some apartments, many years ago when it was shot down. They didn't, uh, get the, um, the permitting. So, apparently, from what I understand, but it's not official from the parishes, that the owners who are from Florida or out of town have decided to turn it into a tree farm?
That's the latest that I, that's the latest that I've, that's the latest that I've heard.
To get a tax deduction, I'm not sure, but anyway, that's what I heard.
That's what I heard, that's what I heard, that's what I heard too. I, I, like I said, I've been on the phone almost every day with them, but I'm, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that, um, they will put some statement out. There was a lot of things that happened today, uh, that accelerated some of the investigation. Just wanted to put that out there.
Any other reports?
We had our, um, our housing, uh, the housing committee that was set up, uh, they had to kick off for the civic consulting, uh, last week. Uh, it, it went well, um, that it toured around the city. I'm pretty excited to hear what, what they'll come back with. Uh, they, they should be giving us, uh, I think quarterly, is it quarterly, uh, report updates, Ms. Ron? Monthly, monthly, so, um, so yeah, excited to see what it brings back and, and they'll be reporting to us, um, housing committee, every couple meetings on what, what's going on. So, uh, excited to see where that brings us.
Chief, could you come up and mention about the camp?
Beginning June twenty-eighth, Monday, uh, the Camp Blue, uh, will be going on for the second year. Last year, we had about thirty-six participants. Um, we actually shared the training facility with the sheriff's office last year and we found that to be a little problematic, having full-time officers there and having thirty-six kids running around. So, uh, the whole training facility will be utilized for our Camp Blue this year. Uh, we're gonna break it up into two different groups, it'll be ages from the age of nine to twelve and then the other group will be the teenagers from thirteen to seventeen. Um, so if anybody's interested, our Facebook page, you can go on it, you can, uh, recommend that they fill out the application and submit it in, and, uh, there is limited space. So, the sooner somebody gets in the application with their child's name on it, um, the, the better off it'll be. It is free of charge, uh, it's not, it cost anything, we don't, uh, pass a cost on to the citizens and it's a great opportunity for, for children and our community policing initiative so they can get to know the police officers and get to hang out with police officers and, and everybody kinda bring it up, as well as bring some education, um, especially to the teenagers such as, uh, traffic stops and, and cyberbullying and, and different things like that that occur on, uh, social media. We bring in social media experts, uh, that come in and discuss that with the kids. So, if anybody's interested, our Facebook page, uh, just get the application filled out and get an email back to the email address on the, uh, Facebook page and we'll get them lined up.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh.
Oh, oh, motion.
Get a motion to adjourn.
First, first, second, all in favor. Oh, he left.